Okay, we'll get started. We're going to get started with our West Haven City Council meeting tonight. Tonight is December 3rd, 2025. It's 6 o'clock and my name is Rob Vanderwood. I'm the mayor of West Haven and I'll be calling this meeting to order. Our first part on here is we want to welcome everyone here that's here in the audience and those that are joining us online. We're missing a couple of our council members tonight on business travel. So we'll get by with the three that are up here. That's fantastic to have them here and we appreciate our staff being here too and representing some of the things that are on here. So we'll get started with our next thing on our agenda, our opening ceremonies. We'll do our pledge of allegiance and we'll have that by Councilmember Saunders and our prayer or moment of silence by Councilmember Dixon.
I'd like to ask everyone to stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where riches stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind father in heaven, we are so grateful to meet tonight as the city council of West Haven. We're grateful, Father, for the community within which we live and for all of the people who support us. We're grateful for the police and fire who keep us safe and also for those in the armed forces that are away from home right now. We ask thee, Father, to bless us as we go through this Christmas season, that we will be able to look around and see the needs of others who may be around us. We also ask thee that as we make decisions, we will be able to consider the input and make the correct decision. Again, Father, we are so grateful for thee and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmembers Saunders and Councilmember Dixon for that. All right, we'll move on to our next item on here, our public presentation. This is for residents attending the meeting. They have allotted two minutes to get up and express a concern or ask a question about any issue that is not on the agenda. No action can or will be taken on any issues that are presented. Do we have someone that would like to come forward? Mr. Hunter, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Randy Hunter, 4366 West 3850 South, West Haven. And welcome, friends. It's good to see you. Not a lot here tonight. What's the deal?
Just like it was when you were...
Just like. Hey, I've got, I've shared this with a couple of council members, but I couldn't add others in that string legally. So I thought I'd bring it here tonight. But just a suggestion on housing. I'm just, I guess, suggesting you consider a new zoning ordinance that would be for smaller footprint homes. Maybe 900,000 square feet up to 1,500 square feet or something like that. I'm not going to call it affordable because nothing's affordable these days, but less costly. But also included in that zoning ordinance would be a mandate that they are owner occupied. So these could not be rented for Verbos or Airbnbs or long-term rentals at all. They have to be owner occupied. And the reason there is, you know, it's almost like times of the season here, but it's almost like It's a Wonderful Life in Potterville. You know, he wanted to build all these places for renting so people and corporations could continue to get rich. But it takes away the opportunity for, you know, the common citizen to purchase a home and have the American dream. And so you guys have done an excellent job in managing the explosion of high-density multifamily units that previous councils, way back, way back, previous councils, approved. And so, you know, let's look at a lot of those zones, those zoning areas where maybe you still have some high-density multifamily units. And instead of putting multifamily units up there for some developer or some corporation to get rich off of people having to continue to rent, let's make a new zone that we could build these smaller homes that people could move into. Now, when somebody moves into those, purchases it and moves in and they want to upgrade in three to five years, that home has to be sold. It can't be rented. This would be of imperatority, basically, for that zone is to mandate owner occupied. I just, you know, if we can, if we can kind of work on solving that issue here in our little community, maybe other communities within Utah can adopt it and go from there. But just, just consider a new zoning ordinance that's owner occupied and smaller footprint homes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, anyone else like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward on item number four, our upcoming events. We have our Utah League of Cities and Towns, our official training day for our local government trust. That is December 6th coming up here real soon and that's from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. We also have a, our Utah League of Cities and Towns official training day for virtual that you can get online and go with that on December 13th of this year, of course, and 9:00 to 1:00 o'clock as well. And then we have our music circle that has always been fun and that's at the Barn Community Center. That's on December 22nd at 7:00 p.m. We have our senior luncheon also at the Barn on December 17th and that's at 11:30 a.m. And we, this time we have, for the end of the year, we have invited the council and staff to that. So if you can attend that, would you just let us know or make sure that it gets in the books so we've got you down for...
Did you say the 17th?
It's the 17th of December at 11:30. So we've got some staff members coming to that as well this month. It's for our senior lunch bunch. You qualify for that. Anybody over 35? Okay, anything else, any other upcoming events that we have that we missed? Okay, we'll move on to item six. Yeah, item six on here for our council updates. I just wanted to talk briefly about the heart of the holidays that we had and what a great event that was. It turned out really, really well. Events only turn out well if you've got good coordination, a great team and people that are willing to work. And so we've got a great events committee that is working hard. We had our youth council there that were doing donuts and hot chocolate. We also had donations for the youth group for the high school. They have their kind of a, what would you call it, a room?
It's a teen center?
Teen center. Thank you. I can't remember the name of it. We've got some donations, like some socks and clothing and things like that for the teens that may have some difficulties and they provided a great list that we could provide some things for. And we've got a couple of big boxes to take over for that. So that turned out really well. We also had the choirs here from several of the schools. I think we had six schools, if I remember right, that came over and did a great job getting us in the spirit of Christmas, just singing us some songs up on stage and stuff. It was great. Did a great job. We had our ornamental design and put together for Christmas trees. I got two of them hanging on my tree now. They look great. The grandkids did. And we also had probably one of the biggest gingerbread house things I've seen in a long time. They had the designs and everything happened down. There was tables all the way down the hallway with people building houses and working on that. So really great job was completed and done overall. So, and then of course, we had Santa. I mean, you can't go wrong with Santa typically. So it was a really great evening and I just wanted to send our appreciation from the council. We appreciate Councilmember Call being on that committee as well and all the work that goes into that. Councilmember Dixon was there as well and really helped a lot with guiding people where to go. And we, oh yeah, we did have photos and stuff of Santa too. I forgot that. And it was a great evening. I appreciate our committees that worked so hard to make that happen. So anyway, any other council updates that we want to share?
Mayor, I was just going to say that we are accepting donations through the 15th, isn't it, Carrie? I think it's December 15th for the teen center at Westfield. So if anybody wants to contribute.
Do they just bring that here?
Okay. Yeah, should be fantastic and we've got quite a few things, but we can always use more. Great list of items on there. Anything else from the council? Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Item six, action on consent agenda. On A, we have our city council meeting that was held on November 5th of this year. We have our item B, our special board of canvassers meeting. That was to just confirm everything for the elections that came up and that was held on November 18. We also have item C, Staker Parsons Companies for $110,335.37 for some construction work done here in the city as well. And those are the items on our consent agenda. Any questions on any of those items? Okay, no changes. I'm ready for a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the items on consent agenda A, B, and C.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call on that. Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Call?
Aye.
And Councilmember Saunders?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on that. Thank you. Move on to item seven on here. We have advice and consent of one planning commission member appointment submitted by myself, Mayor Vanderwood, to fill the remainder of one four-year term. The term will be from October 15th of 2026 through December, should have been 25 on here, right? 25, I think I got it on here. I just can't read it. We're good. 25. Do I have to wait till next year? We're good. Until December 31st of 2027. And after going through several names and interviews and reviewing with people, we've come up with, I came up with the submission of Mr. James Jensen. And so that's who I'm submitting to the council for approval on that. And I'm opening it up for questions if you have any. If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve advice and consent of one planning commission member, James Jensen, submitted by Mayor Vanderwood to fill the remainder of one four-year term. Term will be from October 15th, 2025 through December 31st, 2027.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this from the council? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So you're in. Congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on here, which is item eight for our swearing-in ceremony. We'll have you come up, Mr. Jensen.
Yep.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
I, James Jensen, do solemnly affirm.
I, James Jensen, solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
I will support.
And obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
Say that again?
And the Constitution of this state.
Oh, the Constitution of this state.
And that I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office and this fidelity. Thank you.
Hey, congratulations. We appreciate that. James is a father of four. He's married to a wonderful lady. He's got 20 years plus in the, I think, the scouting program. He's been involved with, working with people getting their Eagle ranking. I know he coached five people in projects for the trail by the cemetery. He's been on the events committee for, I believe, seven years now and he runs the car show. It's one of the best in the state. It's really a great opportunity. He's worked at Ottolay for 33 years as an engineer supervisor and he's served on the West Haven Special Service District Board for the past two years and served as the co-chair in that. So we're really excited about having him move up to the planning commission and stay involved with the city and continue to give us that direction. So thank you again for accepting that and thank the council for moving forward with the appointment. Well, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next item on here. Item nine, action on resolution 53-2025, consideration of adjustment and partial refund of the standard transportation impact fee for EK Bailey Construction at 3454 West, 4,000 South. And we'll have Mr. Nelson, do you have anything you'd like to add for that?
No, so the, well, maybe a little bit. So this is for the Zeppi's development. The applicant lasts when they're seeking their building permit and we gave them their, what the impact fee was felt at the time that was a little high. However, they didn't have the engineering or justification to, for the city to consider any type of adjustment or waiver of the impact fee that was assessed based on our impact fee analysis. And so they paid for the impact fee and so they could obtain the building permit so they could begin construction. And during the times, we were in conversations with them and told them that if they got us, got us the engineering and study within a year of paying the impact fee, at that point, we could consider a partial refund depending on what their study turned out. Since then, they did submit a full study of their traffic and the impact and found that it did deserve a partial refund. And so that's what's under consideration today.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, do you have some questions? Questions this time?
I did have a question. I was trying to ask it in an intelligent way. So when we say that Zeppi's only comprises 1,654 square feet of the 5,000, will the person that comes in next replace that impact fee based on what they will have coming in?
So we've already assessed the impact fee for the full structure.
Okay.
The only thing that they are challenging or the only thing they're requesting a refund on is just the Zeppi's portion. The Zeppi's was a much higher.
Okay.
Impact fee because it was a drive-through and therefore has a higher traffic demand and therefore a higher transportation impact fee.
Got it. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions from the council?
I guess I wondered how you can determine the impact fee, like studying it the week after it's open and not later after it's been open for a while?
Do you want to address that?
Can you repeat the question, Councilperson?
I just wonder how you determine exactly the traffic counts, right? Or the, when's the best time to do the study if you do it directly after they open?
I think the challenge is having a typical standard kind of expectation with the overall long-term traffic impacts going to be. Something like a Zeppi's is, although under the Institute of Transportation Engineers guidelines, it falls under a typical drive-through. It doesn't necessarily operate like a drive-through would be for, say, a McDonald's or some other fast food. They have different peak times and different seasons. And generally, with those specialized cases, the only data we ever get is from similar studies of similar facilities in the state. And that's basically what they did here.
Okay, so it doesn't matter when it's done. They could do it right after it was opened?
No, in fact, it's typical of what they found or what Mr. Whalen said in his report. It's typical of this kind of facility that they've studied before.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 53-2025, the consideration of adjustment and partial refund on the standard transportation impact fee for EK Bailey Construction at 3454 West, 4,000 South.
Second? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council on this particular resolution? If not, we'll do a roll call. Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Saunders?
Aye.
And Councilmember Call?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on that. Thank you. Thanks for your help on that as well. Item 10, action on planning commission meeting recommendations. Item A is for action on resolution 54-2025 for water use and preservation element for the general plan. And we'll turn that over to our community development director, Mr. Stephen Nielsen.
Perfect, thank you. And I also want to recognize Aubrey Larson with Landmark Design is online with us and has, we'll do a quick run-through of what's in the plan and kind of some of the details of why certain elements are included in the plan and some of certain goals. But I will give a quick introduction to this process. So the state back in 2022 and then then the next year in 2023 adopted Senate Bill 110 and then Senate Bill 76 that required most cities in the state to adopt a water use and preservation element within our general plan. They required several things that this plan should address, mostly focused around how development patterns within our city would impact water use and then on steps to conserve water on a per capita basis. And then also how we can implement regional water conservation goals and how our water use will impact the Great Salt Lake. And so as such, in May of 2025, we contracted with Landmark Design, who is our long-range planning consultant that the city has, to create the element for the general plan and then review. And then also after the elements adopted, we will take a look at our landscape ordinance and standards. And so we went through several steps in order to create this master plan and took it to the planning commission. We first did a workshop with the planning commission, their last meeting in October, and then did a public hearing on November 12th. We did receive a comment during that meeting and had some feedback from the planning commission. The plan that's before you tonight addresses the comments that were made and recommendations by the planning commission. And so now I will turn the time over to Aubrey to kind of go through the different elements in the plan and some of those details.
Thanks, Stephen. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. I just want to express gratitude for accommodating me virtually this evening. I apologize I'm not there in person, but hopefully we can, we can get together another time. Okay, I'm going to try and share my screen. Are you able to see my slides?
Yep, yes.
Perfect. Okay, I'm going to try and go through this pretty quickly. If you have questions, feel free to say, please pause. I hope this can be more of a conversation. I see my role this evening is really just giving you the information you need to make an informed decision. And Stephen, of course, if you have comments, please feel free. Okay, just some more project background. I think Stephen's covered most of this background information. First, I just want to give you context. What is this document? This essentially functions as a new chapter of your general plan. And as you know, a general plan is meant to be an advisory guide to land use decisions. It's meant to describe where you are, where you want to be and how you will get there. This document does not create regulations or requirements, but it does recommend some goals and strategies to help you achieve those water conservation goals. So as per state code, there are now four required sections for a general plan, land use, housing, transportation, and now water use and preservation. Stephen already covered this. I won't go over this again, but I just want to mention the deadline for adoption is December 2025. But obviously, if you have comments or concerns, that takes priority. And then Stephen highlighted, you know, these kind of four base requirements that we're looking at. One other thing I'll highlight is there is a requirement in the code to consult with the public water system or systems serving the city. As you're likely aware, there are four different systems that serve West Haven with drinking water. We met with each of them and we also met with Weber Basin Water Conservancy District as the wholesale water provider. That was a great conversation and I think that helped provide a lot of context and perspective for the water element. And they also had some great feedback on, you know, what is in West Haven's power as you're not a water provider? Okay, I'm going to just go quickly kind of through the structure of the document. So the first part is an introduction. It sets the stage. It outlines what the requirements are and then describes, you know, what did we hear from our consultation with those different water systems? As a review, these are the four systems that serve West Haven. And this map shows you their general service areas, all of varying sizes, different land uses. And we tried to summarize, you know, some of those key differences in the document. So some key themes that we heard from our conversations and Appendix A does include a more full summary of what we heard, but essentially, these were the top five things. Everyone's talking about growth pressure and that, how that is sometimes feels like it's in conflict with water supply realities. What do we do about that as growing communities, as planners, as elected officials that want to do right by their community and make sure that you grow in a sustainable way while respecting water rights of residents? We talked about water planning and the administrative process. I know that was a big goal for West Haven is we really wanted clarity. Who does what, when, how do we work with the water providers? What does the development process look like? When should they be notified? So we really wanted to make sure that we had some clarification to empower the city, that process. We also talked about water rights and constraints and how there's some limitations there, opportunities for strengthening local conservation and then the importance of education and awareness and helping residents make informed decisions based on the best available data. Okay, so just a little water planning context. We start at the regional level. West Haven's within the Weber River watershed. Water, as I mentioned, is provided through a wholesale provider, the Weber Basin Water Conservancy District. And then there are some regional water conservation goals. And then we go from there to the individual water systems, from source to tap. And then talk a little bit about, you know, what are the effect of development and development patterns on water demand? And then those culinary water system profiles follow. So as I mentioned, you're part of the Weber River watershed. This is one of five major river basins that do eventually drain into the Great Salt Lake. The Weber River supplies about 21% of the state's drinking and agricultural water, which is pretty significant. And then a number of years ago, the state established regional goals for each of these different areas and you can see that in that graphic. My understanding is these goals are a little outdated. They're working to update them, but I think it does give you some perspective and somewhere to start and a good baseline. Culinary versus secondary water. So just some terms. Hopefully you found the terms in the front of the document useful. There's a lot of lingo with water and water planning and it can be complicated and confusing, so hopefully that helps. So culinary water is treated to drinking water standards. It's primarily for indoor use. However, there's not always secondary water available, so it can be used at times for outdoor uses. Secondary water is untreated, used for outdoor irrigation. And there is a new requirement for metered connections for all pressurized connections by January 1st, 2030. There are a number of benefits of metering. It helps reduce waste, detect leaks and then information. It supports more informed water use. And then suppliers for secondary water that comes mainly by Weber Basin and Roy Water Conservancy Districts in West Haven, but there are a number of smaller canal companies. We noted that one of the challenges for West Haven is there are a lot of data gaps. It's city-specific usage data is hard to come by for both your culinary and secondary systems. So one of the strategies in the document is to, you know, talk with the water provider, see if you can get better data to make, make sure that you really understand your water use. So just some thoughts on effects of development on water demand and infrastructure. Land use drives water demand. How we use land is directly related with how much water is used. So different uses, whether that's agricultural, residential, et cetera, they all have distinct needs and infrastructure implications. Agriculture in general is declining throughout the state. There's some different trade-offs with. It's usually developed and becomes residential use or some other use and that usually transfers from surface water to groundwater. There's just different implications. And then residential water is the largest share of municipal and industrial demand. Variables like lot size, housing type, all have an. Variables like lot size, housing type, all have an impact on water consumption. And then just some other uses are mentioned institutional use. In West Haven, this is pretty minimal, but as a city, you do have an opportunity to be a leader and, you know, lead by example and showcase some great water-wise. Landscaping and efficient irrigation. Commercial and mixed use also vary by scale. And have different benefits and costs just depending on how they're used. And then, of course, industrial is similar. It just depends on different operations. Different types of industry, et cetera. Okay, this is just a sample of one of the system profiles. We really wanted to make, you know, useful information if a resident is curious about, well, I live here. Who provides my water? What are their goals? What are the water sources? Is there metering? What's current land use look like? What what'll this area maybe be like in the future? So this, these tables are meant to just provide a snapshot of hopefully some useful information. Okay, this comment actually I think came up from the Planning Commission. You'll note that each profile. It lists out some regional goals and those goals came from the different water systems. They are required to have a water conservation plan. We reviewed those plans and that's more or less where those goals came from. Why are they all different? The reason is because there is not a national standard for reporting gallons per capita per day. It can be measured in a variety of different ways. There's different variables that come into play. So this graphic is just meant to show, here's some different examples of how it can be calculated. If you have different land uses, different populations, different compositions of. Infrastructure and utilities, they all have an impact on those goals and those numbers. And again, what would be really helpful is to sit down and have a conversation with the utilities and. See if you can all get on the same page, share data, have some good information. Okay, so this next section of the document shaping West Haven's water future. We did resident outreach and tried to glean, you know, what are some resident perspectives? What are they thinking about? What do they need? This section walks through some proven policies and practices that the city could explore that are within their power. And then we talked a little bit about what does water stewardship look like in West Haven? Appendix B has a summary of public outreach. These are kind of some high-level takeaways. We get the sense that people are concerned about water. They're thinking about it. It's, it's, there's a lot of, you know, what do we do? You know, how how much of this is in our control? There's also a desire for action. We noted in our survey that about fifty percent of people feel the city isn't doing enough, but thirty-eight percent aren't sure, so I. This is definitely an opportunity for outreach and visible leadership. There seems to be some shared values, residents prioritize sustainability, and they want to make sure that there's water for future generations. We also noted that there seems to be a high willingness to change, especially in converting to more water-wise landscaping, and I think. Supplementing that with programs such as Flip the Strip, Utah Water Savers, I think there's some great opportunities to help residents that that want to do this. We also have some numbers from program, program participation through the Utah Water Savers Program. West Haven has a qualifying landscaping ordinance that allows residents to participate. These are some different numbers. Some are definitely more impactful than others and notice that there are different dates. These programs didn't all start at the same time, so that's an important distinction. But the most popular to date has been the smart controller rebate with two hundred and seventy participants since two thousand eighteen. So just a quick, I'll I'll go through this quickly, practices and policies. What it really comes down to, what's in your control as the land use authority? How can you encourage more efficient use of indoor water? What can you do about outdoor water reduction? I I think this is definitely the focus since landscape irrigation accounts for over sixty percent of residential water use. And targeting outdoor water efficiency is definitely critical for meaningful conservation. And then there's just some graphics to kind of illustrate that point. And then the third is water smart development. How can you grow in such a way? That you can promote water conservation and there's different strategies. This isn't to say that you you have to do smaller lots, cluster development, et cetera, but these are some tools in your toolbox. As you decide what the future of West Haven holds. So for West Haven, we, you'll you'll notice that your three goals are reflected in this section that talks about watered stewardship. The three goals are clarifying administrative responsibilities, two advancing shared water conservation goals, and three updating local policies and standards. So hopefully that the connection makes sense how we got to this point. And then the last section is just looking forward and it then lists out those goals along with some implementation strategies. So we did our best to show, you know, how how is West Haven going to grow? How much is it going to grow? These are vague on purpose. These are rough numbers and I think we'll have better information in the future. So we have an estimated number of current units versus future units. And then what we did was, you know, just to kind of give you an idea of your trajectory. We took the state standard of point four-five acre feet per unit. This is for culinary water only. Secondary water wasn't included since there are some data gaps. And then we times that by, you know, the estimated number of units and that gives you a rough idea of where you're heading. That's what the graph on the right is meant to show. And then if we look at, you know, if there's the state regional goal recommendation is to reduce by twenty percent, what does that trajectory look like? So just kind of giving you a rough idea. Okay, and then it just goes into recommended goals and implementation strategies. I won't go through all of these. I'll turn it back to you, Stephen, but if there are any that you would like to talk about, just let me know. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll say, are there any questions?
I have a question on here just from. The metering side, you know, we've, we've had metering going on for years in different areas of different cities and so forth, but. The overall long-term goal of metering, is it going to be just to monitor water in general? Is that what they're really looking for?
For secondary water?
Secondary water.
So it is a state requirement that all pressurized secondary systems have meters on them. And Aubrey, you might know a little bit more about this than I do, but. I believe the idea, there's been some studies that showed just by tracking how much water is used, it shows some reduction in water use. And so the idea is that they could be able to start to. Monitor water use. I wouldn't be surprised if what it turns into is kind of being charged kind of like culinary is. Most secondary water providers just charge a flat rate now because it's not metered, you pay so much a month for your secondary use. But I wouldn't be surprised if in the future it turns into a more graduated rate like culinary.
Aubrey, I think you mentioned outreach provided. Is there any outreach to residents or any? Other type? I know we had, you know, our survey at West Haven Days last year. Is there any other opportunities for? Training or understanding water a little bit more to have open houses, anything like that?
Maybe I I can jump into that a little bit. So we did, we did a booth at West Haven Days and talked to a few residents and. And then we also did an online survey and as part of that, we had it out at the booth at West Haven Day, so we also sent it out in the newsletter. And so property owners had a chance to provide feedback in that direction or that way. We also reviewed some old, some surveys that had taken place within the city, not only some previous internal plan outreach. But also there is the Utah Well-being Survey that was done here in the city in twenty twenty-four. That had a couple of questions about general well-being and that survey indicated that there was. Let's see, it's on page sixteen. And the well-being survey found that water supply and water quality ranked among the top. Long-term concerns of West Haven residents. That would be seventy-three percent and then seventy-two percent. And so those, that was kind of, that was the basic outreach that we did as part of this general plan update.
I think a lot of the people who think that we are not doing enough is because we're building too many. Things, so I mean, that's. And I think that that's what I hear all the time is we don't have enough water. Why are we building so much? So I'm not sure how representative that is of the reality that we face, so.
Yeah, and that was, I was a concern that was brought up by the Planning Commission as well, that there is. Concern about, you know, the overall impact of our water use versus how much we're growing and what type of development patterns actually. Fall into that or would lend themselves to be more efficient and would conserve water at a higher rate? And it is kind of a complicated question because. You know, you could do less units on larger lots, but there's been some studies that show that. Even a larger lot could, because they have more landscaping, they tend to use more water than even if you had the same number or had a. Couple more units on the same acre. And so trying to find that balance and the way to conserve water is can be fairly difficult.
So I have a question too about agriculture and as we're moving from agriculture into more residential. Does agriculture basically use more water or less water as we?
Would say it depends on what you're doing on that agriculture lot. If you just, if you're grazing cattle or. That tends to use less water than if you're growing alfalfa or some water-heavy crop. So and it also depends on what you end up putting on that property too. And so there is like, there's a lot of property in West Haven that they do just graze. And so that when those are developed, those properties will, will use more water than what they were.
That's a great answer. I know with alfalfa, it's kind of odd that out here in the desert, we raise a lot of alfalfa. And it takes the most water, actually, but it's. But it's a, it's something that we feed our animals with and everything, so it's an important part of our crop that we raise out here. But yeah, that's interesting. It's a good question.
Other questions? As you, as you went through this, did you look at the ordinance as well along with it? And how well do you think our ordinance? Because I know Kim and I sat on a committee a few years ago to update the ordinance, get it, bring it more in line with, you know. The state's requirements and so just wondering. How we're looking that way, if if there's more adjustments that you found that need to be. Implemented into the actual ordinance to to meet some of these goals.
Yes, so on page twenty-five, it kind of talks about that a little bit more. Aubrey's brought it up on the screen. Generally speaking, our ordinance is pretty strong. I mean, one of the best, one of the. Biggest tools that we have as a city for water is through landscape standards. Because for the most part, the state has adopted more efficient indoor standards through the updated last building code. And so you're not going to find much water savings indoor unless you start requiring like heat recirculation pumps and pool covers, start doing those type of things. That can minimize some culinary use. But generally speaking, updating the outdoor centers is where you're going to get your most bang for your buck. And our ordinance is actually pretty strong water conservation wise. And we feel like it really does start to achieve some of those purposes, like we've already limited landscape or lawn, which is the most water-intensive type of. Landscape that you can have. And so there's some limitations there and then there's also some other standards, especially for commercial or institutional development. What we really have found is that what we want to do is go through and fine-tune it a little bit. Just because we've ran into some questions from applicants about implementation of different segments of it. And really try to, and yeah, just fine-tune it and kind of fix those little holes or. Parts of the ordinance that might not be getting us exactly what we want.
And then. I know before when we were looking at this, there's, there is opportunity for kind of public outreach with. Seemed like Weber Basin was willing to do workshops and stuff like that. How effective are those? Do people? Show up to them, you know, are there ways to make them more effective? So that they know what, what I'm thinking is what they know what the incentives are that are available. And how how to go about.
Yeah, that's a good question. And one of our main strategies that we have, I think it's in section two. I can maybe find the right one, but we found that a lot of residents. Might not know of some of the tools that are available to them. And so finding ways to educate. Residents as what, what tools and resources are available to either update their landscaping into more water-wise? Or to help new homeowner or homeowners who've bought brand-new homes who need to do their landscaping, what our ordinance actually is. And how to, and some guidelines on how to landscape it appropriately. You can see. Let's see, we have that.
I think it's two-point-four, Stephen.
Yes, thank you. And our implementation two-point-four, that is something that we wanted to do. And also in two-point-five, where we're looking at maybe celebrating yards of the month that have implemented more water-wise landscaping. And we wouldn't necessarily say like. You know, we're not necessarily anti-grass or anti-lawn, but to find ways that. You can integrate lawn into other water-wise landscaping, so people can still enjoy that. Grass that, you know, most people want, but still have a yard that is water-efficient.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, these laws are being passed down to us, right? Shouldn't that also be passed down to a developer? That they're required to like, to submit a water analysis. You know, with their plan or a water conservation plan that. That they do, right? That's required that they do, not just that we suggested or here's some thoughts or here's some tools.
Yes, I would, yeah, I completely agree with that, especially with. And we have a lot of more power with commercial and institutional and industrial developments because we review those site plans and their landscape guides. As of right now, we don't require residential developers to develop yards and so it kind of, it falls on to the. Individual home buyer to put that in. And so. One of the things we put in our goals two-point-one was to. Look at our development reviews and approval to ensure they are compliant with our water standards and then. Especially for those commercial and institutional and industrial uses. And then help educate residents as they're coming in to put in their yards and design their yards, so they have the tools necessary so they know the best path forward or know how to. Actually implement what our ordinance says.
So could we do that with with residential developers? Because I know Ivory for the Privadel and for the Fair Haven, they did all of the lawns. They did everything would be, be able to do in ordinance that. Has them.
I, we, there are some restrictions on what we can require for landscaping as part of development, like we can't bond. We can't require a developer to put in a bond for landscaping on private property. And so there are some limitations that we can do. I know a lot of developers have started to do it because it's appealing to home buyers because. It's hard to move in and you're, we are just covered in mud. But that is something that we can look into a little bit more. I do know of several cities that offer incentives for develop or for developers or home buyers to do that. But as of right now, like I said, our tools are limited for what we can and can't require.
It probably could be, probably could be implemented in an HOA-type situation where they're. Required to put in grass and lawns and everything and they provide a plan. Maybe there's some things that we could work on with that.
And we have some tool, more tools in multifamily projects too, because we require a landscape plan for those developments. It's just the single-family homes is where. Currently our code and we have, and we have a little bit less flexibility in what we can require.
It'd really be nice to, I noticed, you know, we only had twelve toilets that went in that were the watery, you know, saving toilets, but we could. Definitely put that in if we wanted to.
Yeah, and the turf, the flip a strip didn't seem to have that much interest in it either. I know we talked a lot about that one when we were doing on the committee of.
Yeah, that's why I'm interested in how do, how do we? How do we educate people on what's available and how they go about it? So, because I think. You know, that's the tough part is. Is getting the word out and, and then. Actually getting people to do that is probably pretty challenging.
I can't, can a developer that's putting in multiple homes, not as, not just a single house. Provide some sort of water analysis. On average, this is what it's going to be if I'm putting in fifty homes. Right? This is what they could determine by the lot size and the house size. That they plan to build. This is probably the amount of water. This is probably the amount of water, right? Couldn't we require that to get a general idea of what that would be?
I think so. I think that is something that we could require. And in some ways, we um, when we work with the, because the water districts require a certain amount of water or impact fee, so they're already doing some of that. Or the water districts are doing it on their behalf based on how many units. And so that could be something we could explore, particularly with the water districts on what that looks like and um, how that would factor in. Because typically right now, if a developer has sufficient water or if the water district allows for an impact fee because they have sufficient water to be paid, then they'll let the development to go through as long as it meets our zoning standard.
Any other questions?
I just, I just really feel like we need to pass this to them, right? It's put upon us, but we're not developing all these places. So they should have as much hold in it, right? Because we get the.
Right, it comes down to us.
You know, and I don't see very many water will serve letters. I've seen them at the county level and I've gone to county meetings, but I don't see them here. So.
So we do require, and that, we haven't been requiring them for developments. And that's actually one of the things we clarified in our most recent development re- um, review process during the preliminary stages, they would, they have to provide will serve letters from water providers. And so that is something that um we have, were, were requiring previously. And then we codified just recently to make sure that was something that we would ensure was happening.
In secondary water, you still have to have shares uh to participate too, I think.
Yes, um, that's what most of the dis, that's what Weber Basin requires. I think Weber Basin will also allow you to do an impact fee at, right now, if you don't have water shares.
Yeah, because water shares are very expensive and they're hard to get, but paper ones anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good one. I think that's good suggestions. Anything else? Okay, if there's.
Oh, I just had a question on, you know, I think it's under goal two, two point seven. Um, wondering how, how that, it's kind of how we work with, what, what is the city's role in that other one?
Yeah.
Weaver Basin managed water within the Weaver River system.
Yeah.
That, that just seems like it's.
Yeah.
Big, big goal and how, how do we do that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Um, the, so state law requires that the plan addresses how we can help maintain water in the Great Salt Lake. And we, since we aren't pulling water directly ourselves, um, the biggest tool we have is to coordinate with the water, the main water provider in the area, which is Weber Basin. And actually, one of the biggest tools that we have is through our landscape ordinance because a lot of the water that is used internal, you know, inside culinary water use, that's you, that's being used inside the home that eventually goes into the sewer system. When that's treated, that gets discharged back into the Weaver River and eventually the Great Salt Lake. And so it's outdoor water use that's really impacting um that water flow. Because, you know, you have it, a lot of it goes to evaporation, a lot of it gets synced into the ground and takes, you know, um, it can take hundreds of years before it returns to natural aquifer here's, uh, before it can be drawn back out. And so one thing that we'd want to do and probably the biggest thing we can do is help decrease outdoor water use. Um, and that's, a lot of that is through um outdoor, you know, outdoor irrigation standards. And I know the state, one thing that they're doing is helping like farms become more water efficient, like piping canals and putting them on pressurized systems. So you have, you use less canal water or lose less of it to evaporation and to seeping through those, through the old canal, so.
Yeah, I don't know what canal it was. They ended up putting plastic down at uh the dirt canal that they've had for years. They put plastic on it to try and cut back on the losses. Okay, anything else? Not, I'm ready for a motion. Item ten.
I'll move to take action and approve action on planning commission me, meeting recommendations, action on resolution fifty four dash twenty twenty five, water use and preservation element for the general plan.
Second. Sorry, that didn't work out very well.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this resolution from the council? Okay, we'll do a roll call on this one. Uh, council member, council member Saunders?
Aye.
Council member Call?
Aye.
And council member Dixon?
Aye.
And that passes, so thank you. Thank you for your work on that as well. Item eleven, we'll move to action on resolution fifty five dash twenty twenty five, approving West Haven City, Utah, uh, America two fifty Community Committee. I'll probably just speak to that real quickly if we can. So uh, we've got that coming up. Uh, so this is going to be a huge celebration and a great opportunity here in America to celebrate our two hundred and fifty. It's going to be a huge celebration across the board. So Utah is, has its own committee that they put together. And they've asked so that we can try and gain the stipend that we uh have access to for around fifteen hundred dollars is to make sure that we'll have a committee put together. So um, in talking a little bit with the events committee group, um, it sounds like we may be able to utilize a good portion of that through our events committee. Uh, I did send out an email to the council indicating a few things that I'd like to see that we could do, working with our um beautification committee, working with historic committee as well on this project as in whole. But I think as council and uh, and the leadership overall, we'll be very much so engaged on this. So we want to make sure that we do have a committee that we're putting together. We want to make sure that the um, the activities and plans that we have moving forward with it will include our project, uh, not only this resolution, but also a project. Um, we'll, we're kind of planning or looking, maybe we'll leave this up to some of the committee members. But uh, some of the recommendations were to try and put a, a parade float together for West Haven Days, um, commemorating our two hundred and fifty years uh of our country being free. And uh, and it's just a lot of interest, interesting things that'll happen, I think, across the board. The other one is uh, uh, our o- opportunity to have our uh potluck, which will be on July fifth, which is a Sunday, that uh, we can get together in different groups. We can do it, you know, as a large group or we can do it in neighborhoods. Uh, I'll let the committee work on that a little bit more to see what they would like to put together and help organize. But that's what we're trying to make sure that we just have uh that set up. It's just a nice committee to work with on our events committee to, to plan it out a little bit and then get back and, and approve that through the council if that works for the, for the city council. So that's what we were looking for, for that. Sean, did you have anything else on that? Council member, do you have any questions about that at all? Any concerns or issues?
No, I'm, I'm excited about it.
Yeah, it'll be fun. Be a lot of fun.
Did you want to do something about our logo or is that?
We'll get to that in just a few minutes here, so. Uh, yeah, so I think if we're good to go on that, we'll do this resolution. That'll help us get started with this process and we'll move from there. So I'm open for, if there's no questions, open for a motion.
I would move that we um approve resolution fifty five dash twenty twenty five, approving West Haven City Utah two fifty Community Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further, further discussion on this resolution? Okay, we'll do a roll call on this one. Uh, council member Dixon?
Aye.
Council member Call?
Aye.
And council member Saunders?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on that. Thank you for that. Whoa, get that more organized and get more information out to the public and uh to each one of us as we get closer on that. Item twelve is action on resolution fifty six dash twenty twenty five, uh, lease of city real property on thirty one hundred west and thirty three hundred south. Um, we'll turn that over to our city manager, Mr. Warnke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, a draft lease agreement that includes property that the city and the district own. Um, and so uh currently it's uh, it's uh, has been historically farmed uh by the Privadel family. And uh, as the city decides and district decides its future use um and works towards implementing it, we felt like the best use of the property would be to have them continue to um, to make it a viable uh piece of, of, of property and production for agriculture. I think alfalfa is grown on, on it currently.
The digital water use.
Yeah, yeah. The, the district and the city do own shares, which is contemplated um in this uh lease agreement. Uh, it is a year to year lease that allows um them to, or the city to, to extend it another year depending on how quickly we move towards um implementing uh future plans uh for that property. Um, it also uh contemplates or has an allowance in there for uh the parking that we um will do each year um to support West Haven Days. And um, I think it makes it clear that there's no agricultural or there's no crop damages associated with that. So we just coordinate um the cut or they, they coordinate or, or take the cutting off the property before, before that event occurs. Um, lastly, I would say one item that uh, that Sharice brought to uh, to Amy's and my, my attention is that uh, we needed to have um a little more detail surrounding how the district and city would split the uh, the lease rates. And so there is a, a sentence added that um, that essentially says that, you know, the city will and district will share in the annual lease payments equally. And so that's not in your version, but uh, when you consider adopting it, if you could take that uh, that statement as um, under consideration and including your approval. Uh, lastly, um, did want to. Maybe that. Maybe that does cover. Oh, I was just going to let you know how the lease uh, the lease rates were determined. We essentially use the same lease rates that we have for the Coombs's property or the Coombs's lease on four thousand, which is forty six dollars um per acre. And then the water shares, um, it seems like what the, what the uh water or canal company leased those uh leases the shares for typically is a hundred and fifty to two hundred, somewhere in that range. And so um, that's essentially how, how the amounts were determined.
Any questions from the council on that lease?
Um, I just want to make sure, Amy, that I understand the lease is from January to December, but they don't pay for it till July?
That's, that's right. And that's helped, to help them with cash flow um purposes relative to.
Fiscal year?
What's that?
For the fiscal year?
Well, so it'll, yeah, it would start this January and then it would uh be uh December through December, but the payment is due in July to correspond with when they would get uh, you know, uh, funds from selling their, their, their crop.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that was correct. That it wasn't due right when they signed. The, the only other thing I wondered about is that, I mean, there's a s- a section here for parking. We're using it in the crop or whatever, but we also fill that ditch to drive over it. Does that need to be stated somewhere that we're going to make? I mean, we remove it like, so it's when they don't have their water, we fill it, so there's no water in it. And we have to remove the, whatever we put in it. Does that need to be stated here?
I think, I, I think we could. I think that's.
I don't know what it would say. I just know that happens.
We fill and we take it out.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, we. So are you talking about the ditch on the front of the property?
Yeah, we have to fill it so that they can, so we can drive over it.
Part of the um, the real estate purchase contract had to do with um us. Some of that agreement had to do with us piping that ditch to begin with. So I don't necessarily know if we need, really need to have it in here just because it is the intent, intent of the city and they agreed um that we could, that we could pipe that ditch as long as it wasn't affecting the water um rights, you know, for the, the, those down the line.
So I guess the question is, is we would just see if the city wanted to go ahead and pipe it sooner than later instead of fill it with dirt? We could possibly do that.
I don't know that that will happen before June, but.
You never know.
In June, it will have two sections that, that are filled with boards over them. So we can drive over it. That's, that was the only thing that I.
But it might be better to look at that as a pipe project and it's not that big actually. It's not.
Well, that's fine. However, we're going to do it. It's just what I noted.
But it was agreed to.
Yeah, it was in the, do you remember that part, Sean, that we talked about that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't my memory, like we talked about it and it was in there, but.
Yeah, because it was a big deal to try and cover that up and it was a lot of work, probably to get the dirt back out because we have to pack it. So it's, it's kind of a situation. Maybe they may want to just fix it now or do something with it now. We'll see.
I'll take it.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? I'm ready for a motion on item twelve.
I will make a motion to adopt resolution fifty six dash twenty twenty five, the lease of city real property at thirty one hundred west and thirty three hundred south with an addition of the line that designates that the district and the shit, and the city will share those lease payments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this resolution?
And however, Amy wants to write that sentence. You're welcome.
Well, I did write it already.
All right, we'll go ahead with a roll call on that one. Uh, council member Call?
Aye.
Uh, council member Saunders?
Aye.
And c- council member Dixon?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on that. Thank you. All right, item thirteen, action on uh twenty twenty five slough maintenance project uh for a rejection of all bids on there. And Mr. Warnke, you want to cover that one real quick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there is a uh, maintenance project that the city had budgeted for and we still intend to do. Uh, this fiscal year, we uh, we did bid and go through the process, but there was a procedural defect in the process that uh, that really prevented us from awarding at this point. And so we will go back through the process, um, you know, correct that deficiency and, and rebid it. I think one of the things that we'll change is uh, we will bid it in schedules so that'll allow the council to award, uh, to award the project in schedules, meaning um, I think it's the Hooper and the Howard that were being proposed. And so um, you know, we'll have, we'll have it itemized out, the bid, so, and we can select in the end um, to what extent we want to actually um, uh, implement that maintenance or, or award that maintenance project.
Any questions on that, counsel?
Okay. I'll move to take action on the slough maintenance project and reject all bids.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on that one and we're going to do a roll call on that one. Uh, so uh, council member Saunders?
Aye.
Council member Dixon?
Aye.
And council member Call?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on that. Thanks. We'll look forward to that future on that one to get that project done. Uh, item fourteen, action on resolution fifty seven dash twenty twenty five, repealing resolution fifty dash twenty twenty five and authorizing the city manager to submit grant applications for ramp funding. So did you, is there any coverage on that? Do you want to go over or?
I, I don't uh, beyond what we discussed in the work session.
We did discuss that in the work session and just wanted to just revamp a little bit on some of the things that we wanted to do on our ramp uh grant moving forward. So if there's no questions on that, I'm open for a motion.
I move that.
Did we, did we need to specify, like we had talked about removing four thousand? And choosing the salt sheds and taking off that playground?
I think uh, she's doing that on the grant itself. So I don't know if you feel like we need to put anything in on that.
I don't know. I've just, that was the discussion.
I think it'll be part of, it'll be okay the way.
Do we need to, is that a question for Amy that, do we need to specify that we're?
We made a couple of changes.
Changes to what projects we're actually applying for in the ramp?
Mm-hmm.
So. I mean, really, this document, the resolution is more for your benefit to kind of block you guys in and make you make a decision. So.
That's one way of looking at it.
What was that?
That's one way of looking at it.
Well, you know.
But I I think I think when we discussed it, it was added to the, we agreed. The document, so the changes aren't something that's probably in great detail.
And we're not really proving anything else, so. It really had more to do giving, making sure that Sheri had.
She had authority to go forward.
Well, and that she had sufficient details as to what you guys wanted to do to be able to to go forward with getting the grant.
I just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I just wondered if we just needed to amend.
Mr. Mayor, could I address it? I I think it would be helpful, you know, the the way it's written right now, it contemplates adding those small pavilions and and a playground and the discussion at the work session was to eliminate the playground, eliminate the pavilions and submit for benches if I understood correctly. And so to that end, I think it would be helpful and then we'll just adjust and and create the budget amounts associated with, you know, with with your proposed projects.
So are you suggesting that we table this or move forward with adjustment to what projects we're going for?
Right, I I'd recommend you make a motion and then just in your motion, make the amendments that you would like to see and we'll adjust the the resolution accordingly.
I think we all agreed to it, so we can move forward.
Okay, well, I'll I'll try this then.
Good, thanks, Kim.
I move that we approve resolution fifty, or that we repeal resolution fifty seven dash twenty twenty five. Okay, let's say approve fifty seven twenty twenty five, repealing resolution fifty dash twenty twenty five, authorizing the city manager to submit grant applications for ramp funding, taking out the playground and the small pavilions at Polter Pond and adding the side of the salt shed for the art. But what's that?
And the benches and and maybe you could be a little bit more general on, maybe you could leave that piece alone at at this point. Because I think we'll just write the grant and and that'll allow us flexibility.
Okay, I will back up then. I move that we approve resolution fifty seven twenty twenty five, repealing fifty twenty twenty five, authorizing the city manager to submit grant application for ramp funding, taking out the Polter Pond playground and small pavilions and inserting benches.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
That sounds great.
All right.
Well, well said.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second on that. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, we'll do a roll call on this one. Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Saunders.
Aye.
And Councilmember Call.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved. All right, item fifteen, action on resolution fifty eight dash twenty twenty five, adopting a temporary commemorative logo for America two fifty to be added to our our documents and everything that we have during this time. And I would recommend the possibility of putting putting that in in January one and run until the end of December of this year, this next year. And we probably need to decide on which one we're gonna use.
Okay, I think I talked about liking the ones with the stars. And so I also like the celebrating two hundred and fifty years of freedom or I guess somehow delineating what we're celebrating. So I like either number one, two, three, four, five, or number two. But.
I don't know how you're numbering those, so.
This across that one. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, left to right, top to bottom.
Right.
Okay, so say which number again.
Okay, so I like the ones with the stars. I like number two or now I forgot which other one I liked. I think number one, two, three, four, five. But I am open to all options.
Isn't five the same as one?
Yes.
They're the same.
Then I like one and five.
One and two, let's go with one and two.
You like one and five, you like the same one.
Okay, I like one and two. But that's just me.
Okay, one and two.
I agree with Kim. I like that there's a little bit more information. Putting the two fifty on there, I think, doesn't mean much. I mean, even putting two hundred and fifty years of freedom. I don't know that everybody follows that. There's gonna have to be some good advertising and marketing of of what it is, right? And I think people will follow that, but I agree with Kim on those first two.
There was, is there a way we could extend that? The vein, this vein up out of out of here on the stars?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you if you see my shirt here, that kind of gets a little bit difficult on s- small logos like that. Yeah, it kind of gets lost. I know Sean likes it to be extended up above cuz it's more true to the original logo. But I think sometimes on, like I'm looking at this and that's hard to even tell what it is.
Yeah, Emily's good at stitching that little piece on here.
So we, yeah, we can definitely do that. That's not a problem. We can extend it like like you see on, guess it'd be number four. It it pops up a little bit. It might be trying to visualize.
Do that cuz of the thicker stars on the top, I see. That makes it harder.
Makes it a little longer and.
I I think we can do that. We can extend it up, I think, a little bit taller, couldn't we?
Yeah.
And get it cleared past the stars cuz I think that that's that is part of our logo and it kind of gets lost in some of the others, but that's just a thought.
It'd look a little awkward, it'd be pretty tall.
Hey, we're reaching for the stars.
I know you are, but I'm not sure.
Didn't love it, we could just.
You're a giant.
Yeah, Emily doesn't have to stitch it on. We can, we can do it either way, but I think that'd look good if we did that, just a little bit taller. I mean, we're we're changing the logo in general anyway, so. Are you okay with starting it in January and running it through?
Yes.
Everybody good with that?
And I think maybe like a newsletter article or something that would tell the articles that the mayor writes to let everybody know.
You two have a preference on what?
Out of out of one and two, I prefer to. I don't know that the word celebrating adds anything, it just makes it a little more. It's not as clean of a logo to me, it's not as a little more. I don't know, just a little too much stuff there. My personal preference, but. I was telling the mayor, I like having the stars on there. I kind of like logo seven, according to Kim's numbering system. But I I like having the stars on there just because I think it helps with the flag theme. There's a Japanese flag that sort of has that. Nothing against the Japanese, but I want it to be American.
The stars and stripes.
And I feel like the stars just kind of add to the flag theme a little bit and.
Hey, too.
Maybe we could just, when needed on there, we could put the celebrating two fifty, you know, on there if needed, but I I think on most of our stuff, we should probably try and keep it as. You know.
We're winning right now, awesome article, everyone will know exactly what it means.
Yeah, I mean, so I like logo two and when we, if we can kind of pull that in and out, like the two years, two hundred and fifty years of freedom when we need it to be more clarifying and maybe when we need it to be more simple, we just pull that off. So any other thoughts?
Well, there's three of you unless you guys.
Seems hard for staff to know which logo to use, though, if we're changing it to fit a situation.
If we just stick with one, I think we'd be fine. It's just that if you're printing it on church or doing something on church, it might get small and hard to read. But it is what it is.
Depends on, yeah.
But. Anyway, thoughts?
You, certain one you like, Sean?
I actually like the logo without the stars, not in the sense of, I actually feel like the stars add to the theme like Councilmember Saunders was saying and help reinforces the concept of the flag. But I also am concerned just how legible that portion will be. As as Councilmember Saunders also mentioned, when we start applying it in different forms, I think it's gonna come as just little.
Blob of.
Yeah.
Little blurb of white in there.
Yeah, and maybe that's okay, meaning, you know, maybe that's worth the the trade off for when it does work really well. But but I, that's just an underlying concern that I have that it might not be really legible.
Yeah, I can see that.
I can see that too, like.
It's a, it's a little bolder. Colors are a little bolder and you have a little more blue involved in it, but. How come you made so many?
I got a lot of different feedback.
Yeah, so which ones do you think?
I like two and I I don't see that we can't just change it. I mean, maybe we. I don't know, is that too confusing to have a couple of different ones that you use for different applications?
What do you think?
I think you guys should pick two, one that's a little bit simpler, one that's not. We'll use the one that's not as simple.
Why Emily is here?
But if we use the one that's not as simple in most places, and then if we do run into issues like on shirts, then we'll use the simpler one.
I'm good with that.
I like it. So which two?
Well, were you meaning simpler means just take off the two fifty years?
Well, we could do. What was the one you mentioned, Sean?
I was just, I'm trying to navigate back.
Like four. Was it four?
It has the two fifty on the bottom.
Well, I was just thinking, I was kind of more focusing my thoughts relative to the stars versus.
Yeah, we could have one without stars.
Kind of like, I guess maybe four, well, I I'm, again, I'm not necessarily looking at the word font or the messaging, I'm actually looking more at the symbol itself. But I kind of like this where the weather vane does stick up above as the mayor mentioned and and the simpler design there, so.
Do you like having the two fifty on it or or like or in it?
You know, I think maybe not having it on there, but but maybe adding the words just cuz I, again, I think it's a little more simple. And it might get lost a little bit when we have started applying.
No two fifty.
Or two fifty years of freedom underneath and and word.
Without the stars.
Right. Just one of those two.
So if we did, so is everybody agreeing one would probably be the one of the top ones? Is that what?
I was thinking two.
Yeah.
I like two, I like.
That's fine.
Thinking one.
Oh, two's fine.
Two's fine?
Two's fine.
Okay, two, we got three for two. Okay, and then what's the second version? Are you thinking?
Four without two fifty, Sean, is that right?
Okay.
Yeah.
How do you guys feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so this is, this'll be our next choice then. So so two and four.
And then we, is is, and again, this might be lost too cuz the font gets, can maybe get a little small, but but we could play with it that but we would add two fifty years of freedom underneath. Is that what you're saying?
Number four, like take out that one and add that part to number four.
Okay.
So it says two fifty years of freedom on both of them.
Unless it doesn't print up something on like on a shirt or something, then they'd have to stitch it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, let's plan on those two. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right, so let's go ahead and if we've got that all worked out, let's go ahead and do that in a resolution. So I'm ready for a motion for fifteen.
I would move that we adopt resolution fifty eight dash twenty twenty five, adopting a temporary commemorative logo.
Second.
Okay, and who's going to identify it? Is this going, is staff, do you have that? Okay, all right. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Okay, let's see, let's go ahead and do a roll call on that one. Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Saunders.
Aye.
And Councilmember Call.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. All right, item sixteen, presentation of a quarterly city manager audit report.
As per our purchasing policy, there is a report prepared that shows the first quarter expenses that were between ten and fifty thousand dollars. And these are the usual expenses that that you typically see with the exception of one for Ready Ready Technology, who is our IT provider who has implemented a new server. And so I I just mentioned that and there was also one for Alter Edge curbing and nineteen thousand dollars, which was relative to some playground curbing. I think it was at Windsor Park, if I'm remembering right. So that's, those are two potentially new ones that you're you're not used to seeing, but otherwise I think they're pretty standard.
Any questions on?
Yeah.
The report. Everything good? Hey, I'm ready for a motion.
I don't think there's a motion in that one.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Let's move to item seventeen or eighteen on here then. Executive, no, seventeen, presentation of any discussion at the mayor and city council election continuation of any agenda item from the five o'clock work session. We don't have anything, do we?
Nope. I forgot to mention that the the discussion of elected officials, it was pointed out to me and I've noticed it myself, there are concerns about parking right on Hinkley from the apartments, the new apartments there are parking on the road.
Oh, on that, yeah.
Yeah, that is.
On the, you know, the new ones that are on the south side. We we marked the curb red here on four thousand for the wings, no, whatever those apartments are called.
Are they in Roy?
Breda, Brea.
Oh, Brea.
Wingspan, that's the new one. Know what that one's called?
It's Wingspan.
Just wanted to bring that up if that's something to consider, possibility or how you felt about that. But there are cars parked there overnight and parked there during the day instead of coming into the facility and using the parking stalls.
Yes, I I have noticed that myself. Yeah, I think we could do something about it. Maybe we can, I mean, is, what do we wanna do, have a discussion about it? Do you wanna talk about it a little more?
I that, I meant to do that in the work meeting, I forgot, so however you'd like to handle it or.
I could just work with city staff on implementing. I I do also believe it's a concern, I travel that road and I tend to get in the left away from that that fog line just cuz I don't want anyone to run out like a child or something and me not have enough time to see and adjust, so I I do think it would be wise.
So, speed.
Sometimes there's work trucks and things like that on that road to park on there. So and and they stick out, I mean, they're not, they're bigger and they got trailers. And so, yeah, I think if we can maybe do something about that. Should we just allow staff to maybe work on that and then get back to us if there's any concerns or issues with that?
Happy to do that.
Any concerns legally with that?
It's a U dot road and so how much we can do to it is, without U dot buy-in is kind of a thing.
I I do think that they've allowed us to, I'll I'll go back and check, but I think we've been able to paint those curbs.
If if it's a U dot road, then I know they're really concerned about somebody being in there right away, so.
I I I believe that for us to prohibit parking on U dot roads, it has to be adopted through ordinance. We have, we have other state roads in ordinance to permit to prohibit parking, so we would just have to add that to the ordinance. You know, U dot pretty much turns that jurisdiction over to the localities. You know, U dot pretty much turns that jurisdiction over to the localities. But we can confirm that.
Yeah, that's.
We can look at that. I don't know how quickly we can get it done, but maybe see if we can put it on our next agenda.
Yeah, we'll look into it and, um, weather permitting too. I mean, that's another element relative to actually getting it painted.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Okay. Move on to our next item on here, item eighteen for, uh, executive session. The council will consider a motion to enter into a closed meeting for the purpose of a strategy session to discuss pending. A reasonably imminent, uh, litigation and the purchase exchange for and the purchase. Exchange or lease of real property to be held in accordance with the provision of Utah Code fifty two dash. Four dash two oh five, and I need a motion to move into an executive session.
Summon it.
Second.
If we got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.